Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. First, I want to thank everybody for being here in attendance for our meeting tonight. The Cadet Corps Commander of Hornville High School, L.A., 933 Air Force ROTC for this upcoming year, 11th grader Alyssa McNeely will lead the prayer before the meeting. Following the prayer, District 4 Board Member Karen Boudreau will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
If everybody could please close your eyes and bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve our community, support staff, and our students. We ask your blessing upon our schools, our teachers, our students, and their families. Keep them safe and guide them on their paths through this school year. In your holy name, we pray, amen.
... of the United States of America, in the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alyssa, and thank you, Mrs. Boudreau. The July 17, 2024 St. Charles Parish Public School Board meeting is now in order. Let the record show that all board members are present, as well as the superintendent and Mrs. Shelley Babanel. First item on our agenda is a resolution in memory of deceased students. Mrs. Karen Boudreau will read the resolution for the four students individually, and the superintendent and myself will present a copy of the resolution to the families.
Whereas Jude Michael Longworth was an eighth-grade student at Harry Hurst Middle School during the year 2023-2024 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Jude Michael Longworth their sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the July 17, 2024 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the student's family. Whereas Mason Anthony Kylie was an eighth-grade student at J.B. Martin Middle School during the 2023-2024 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish Public School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mason Anthony Kylie their sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the July 17, 2024 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the student's family. Whereas Mia Colette Sanchez was a 10th-grade student at Destrehan High School during the 2023-2024 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mia Colette Sanchez their sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the July 17, 2024 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the student's family. Whereas Leila Arshon Scott was a 12th-grade student at Hornville High School during the 2023-2024 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Leila Arshon Scott their sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the July 17, 2024 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the student's family. Whereas Jude Michael Longworth was an eighth-grade student at Hurst Middle School. Mason Anthony Kylie was an eighth-grade student at J.B. Martin Middle School. Mia Sanchez was a 10th-grade student at Destrehan High School, and Leila Arshon Scott was a 12th-grade student at Hornville High School during the 2023-2024 school year. Now be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late students its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the July 17, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the family. Mr. President, I move that you accept the resolution in memory of Jude Michael Longworth, Mason Anthony Kylie, Mia Colette Sanchez, and Leila Arshon Scott.
I second it.
Motion and a second to accept the resolution in memory of Jude Michael Longworth, Mason Anthony Kylie, Mia Colette Sanchez, and Leila Arshon Scott. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. That resolution is unanimously approved. I know this is a difficult time for the families, and if you would like to leave right now, I'll give you time to do that, and I want to thank you all for being in attendance to accept these resolutions, and you have, on behalf of myself and the board members, you have our deepest sympathy. Thank you all. The next item is Board and Superintendent's recognition. Mr. Josh Martin is going to preside over this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, all. I am Joshua Martin, Coordinator of the Arts for St. Charles Parish Public Schools, and it is my honor to acknowledge several elementary students who participated in prestigious ensembles this year. That includes the LMIA District 7 Honor Choir and the Louisiana American Choral Directors All-State Choir. I will call them by school in alphabetical order, and students, when I call your name, I'll ask you to come forward to be recognized, beginning with Ethel Schefner Elementary School, Evelyn Anderson. Carmella Brady. Chloe Doucay. From Lakewood Elementary School, Hayden Gatewood. Adley Abear. Riley Line. From Luling Elementary School, Genesis Amaya. Alice Barrett. Sinyla Claiborne. Tyon Lewis. Chloe Parnell. From RJVL Elementary, for both District 7 Honor Choir and ACDA All-State, Colton Aloe. For both District Honor Choir and All-State Choir, Kieran Austin. For both District Honor Choir and All-State Choir, Katie Babbin. Lastly, from RJVL, Addison Boudreau. Come on, Mom. One more from RJ, I apologize, Izari Kirall. From St. Rose Elementary, Abigail Cardagena. Alejandra Gonzalez. Siri Rafipati. Accepted on her behalf by her father. Good job, Dad. And finally, Kyrie Stewart. That concludes this portion of the meeting. Congratulations again to all of the students present tonight and all those who were not able to make it on this wonderful accomplishment. Congratulations, everyone.
Thanks, Mr. Martin.
Anytime.
On behalf of the rest of the school board members, I'd like to congratulate all of our students for their awards, and at this time, we will take a short break, and if any of you would like to leave, you can do so at this time, and you're very welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you choose to. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Okay, we are back in order. Next item, hold on a second, I got the wrong agenda here. Next item is approval of the minutes of the June 17, 2024 Committee Meetings and the June 20, 2024 Board Meeting.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the meeting minutes as noted.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as noted. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The minutes of the June 17 and the June 20 meetings are unanimously approved. Next item is enrollment insurance provider. The Risk Management Department solicits brokers on a three-year cycle. We are in year three of three. Requests for qualifications were sought from several brokers through advertisements. The district received four responses to the request for qualifications, and the Risk Management and Insurance Committee reviewed and evaluated statements of qualification based on criteria set forth in the request for qualifications. The selection of AGM Benefit Solutions provides the district with high-quality services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept a proposal from AGM Benefit Solutions for enrollment insurance services.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Have a motion by Mr. Cody, second by Mr. O'Quinn. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The proposal from AGM Benefit Solutions for enrollment insurance services is unanimously approved. Our next item is the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on July 15, and is aligned with Goal D of the Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance with AIG Incorporated from Arthur Gallagher Risk Management Services at a cost
I second it.
Motion by Mr. Cody, second by Mrs. Weber. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The motion to approve the purchase of student accident and catastrophic insurance with AIG from Arthur Gallagher is unanimously approved. Next item is the purchase of Faithful Performance Bonds. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of a blanket employee crime policy with faithful performance, including coverage for the superintendent as treasurer of the Board and the tax collector furthermore to allow the non-renewal of the two current individual bonds with CNA Surety covering the treasurer and tax collector.
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve that agenda item at a cost of $23,263, right, Mr. Cody? Thank you. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.04, purchase of faithful performance bonds, is unanimously approved. Our next item on the agenda is 4.05, the approval, approve the purchase of excess workers' compensation insurance from Midwest employers casualty. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the purchase of excess workers' compensation insurance from Midwest employers casualty. This would be a cost in the range of $159,558 up to $168,691.
I second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mrs. Weber. Is there any board discussion? If there's no board discussion, please cast your vote. Item 4.05 is unanimously approved. Our next item is a request for qualifications for electronic inventory services. Let's see here. The property insurance rates are continuing to increase at record levels. Underwriters are requiring a detailed schedule of values of all buildings and accurate replacement values for contents. In an effort to fulfill this request of the underwriters, the St. Charles Parish School Board is seeking professional services to provide virtual imaging and accurate schedule of values for buildings and its contents. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee meeting on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to authorize the request for qualifications for electronic inventory services.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a motion by Mr. Cody and a second by Mr. O'Quinn. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.06, the request for qualifications for electronic inventory services is unanimously approved. Our next item is 4.07, revisions to the Board Policy and Procedure, 4.7.2 Military Leave for Second Reading and Adoption. This agenda item was reviewed and accepted for first reading at the meeting of the Board on Thursday, June 20, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to approve the recommended revisions to Board Policy and Procedure, 4.7.2 Military Leave for Second Reading and Adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Suffren, and second by Mrs. Cody. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.07, revisions to Board Policy and Procedures, 4.7.2 Military Leave for Second Reading and Adoption, is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.08, disciplinary hearing officers. According to the law, the Board is required to maintain current lists of disciplinary hearing officers. The Board approved the list of disciplinary hearing officers has been revised due to the retirement of one attorney and the addition of the replacement. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the revised list of disciplinary hearing officers.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Suffren, second by Mr. Cody. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.08, disciplinary hearing officers is unanimously approved, and I believe the new member of that group is Mr. Juan Byrd. Am I correct? Mr. Juan Byrd will be the latest member to the disciplinary hearing board offices. Next item is 4.09. Next item is 4.09. 4.09, the job description revisions. The, I'm going to read this so everybody would know what I'm talking, what we're discussing. The educator evaluation rubric has been changed as a result of the BESI Bulletin 130 and the transition to the Louisiana Educator Rubric. To ensure alignment with the new rubric, the teacher job description has been revised and revisions are being recommended. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the job description revisions as presented to the committee and the board on Monday, July 15.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Is there any board discussion? If none, please cast your vote. Item 4.09, job description revisions is unanimously approved. Next item is personnel items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Any board discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to recognize two members in our audience that are on this report, Ms. Marcy Fulllove, who will be the interim assistant principal at Destraen High School, in a similar role that she served in last year. Congratulations, Ms. Fulllove. And also in attendance tonight is Mr. Duane Foray, who will be the director of athletics and physical education, and he joins our team. So, welcome to our team, Mr. Foray.
Please cast your vote. Item 4.10, personnel items are unanimously approved. Next item, 4.11, 4.11, revisions to board policy 6.6.1, immunizations of communicable disease for a first reading. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, July 15, and is aligned with goal B of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommended revisions to board policy 6.6.1, immunizations communicable diseases for a first reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.11, revisions to board policy 6.6.1 is unanimously approved. Next item, 4.12, revisions to board policy 6.6.2, administrations of medications for the first reading. This agenda item was reviewed at Personnel and Policy Committee meeting and is aligned with goal B of the Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommended revisions to board policy 6.6.2, administration of medication for a first reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.12 is unanimously approved. Our next item, 4.13, revisions to board policy 6.6.3, behavioral health services for students for a first reading.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommended revisions to board policy 6.6.3, behavioral health services for students for a first reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.13 is unanimously approved. Our next item, 4.14, 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook revisions.
Mr. President, I move approval of the 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. O'Quinn. Is there any board discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to invite Ms. Jerry Smith, executive director of Trial Welfare and Attendance and Student Services, to the podium to give a brief overview.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ortland, and thank you for allowing me to be able to highlight just some of the significant revisions to the 2024-25 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. The Discipline Committee met on May 17, 2024, and the following revisions were suggested for adoption. As it relates to attendance for high school students only in the section for high school students, we have added a clarifying statement defining the difference between tardy versus absence as it relates to period attendance. In the Student Offenses section of the Student Code of Conduct, the first revision is mandated by the provisions of Act 313, and it requires cell phones to be prohibited during the school day. We also have added a new artificial intelligence section in the offense category for academic dishonesty. The 2023-24 High School Violence Prevention Intervention Pilot now becomes a program during the 2024-25 school year. As a reminder to parents and students, a first fight will result in a 45-day suspension where students will participate in a program that requires them to participate in restorative interventions and socio-emotional learning lessons, in addition to maintaining positive attendance and academic instruction. The second fight for high school students will result in an expulsion recommendation. For the upcoming school year, for middle school students, a Violence Prevention Intervention Program pilot is implemented. For a first offensive fighting, a 20-day suspension at the Landry Educational Program Center is required. While there, students will participate in a program, including academic instruction. They will be required to maintain positive attendance, participate in restorative interventions, and socio-emotional lessons. For a second offense at the middle school level, it will result in a 25-day suspension. A third offense will result in an expulsion recommendation. Another change for discipline is related to mandated legislation out of the 2024 Louisiana Legislative Session. It is Act 337. This is very important for parents to be aware of. For complete semester mandatory expulsion for grades six through 12, irregardless of age. This is a big difference. For the possession of a knife with a blade of 2.5 inches or greater, and possession of any controlled dangerous substance on the school campus. Additionally, instead of students being expelled after the fourth suspension, students by this law will be required to be recommended for expulsion after the third suspension. The Student Code of Conduct District Handbook will be reviewed by teachers and students during the first week of school. Parents will receive a physical copy of the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook in the inbox probably on the first day of school, and we strongly recommend that parents will review the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook with their students at home when it arrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Smith, could, I hate to put you on the spot, but the new cellphone law, could you expound on that a little bit? Because I think that's something that everybody should be clear of.
So, Act 313 clearly states in the first sentence that cell phones are prohibited to be possessed on a student's person. However, the very next sentence talks about what would be required to happen if they arrived to school with the cell phones. We feel that our day-to-day operations will not be hugely interrupted because we already had some very proactive measures in place, requiring students to have those devices powered off if they arrive to school with them.
So, we're going to operate this coming school year?
Very similarly to the previous school year, because we already were really in a good proactive place.
Okay, so the important thing is to, is that the cell phones cannot be used?
During the instructional day.
During the instructional day. It's okay to have a phone, but just don't use it, or it's not okay to have it.
It's not the way the law is written.
But as long as it's not used, we can tolerate that. We can live with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 4.14, the adoption of the revisions to the Student Code of Conduct District Handbook is unanimously approved. Brings us to 4.15, interim fiscal year 2025 budget. The state law requires the approval of a budget for the district's general fund and special revenues fund. A public hearing was held earlier this evening at 6:00 PM for public input. Put, there was none. The proposed budget for FY25 represent a budget that allocates approximately 71.7% of the general fund expenditures to go in the area of instruction. This item, this was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on July 15, and is aligned with goal D of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the interim fiscal year 25 budget, which includes costs individually per fund. General fund, $213,191,898. Special revenue funds, $14,589,500. Debt service funds, $11,682,236. Capital projects funds of $30,840,000. And lunch fund, $9,378,700.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Gregson, and a second by Mrs. Boudreaux. Is there any board or other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to invite Mr. Ronald White, our chief financial officer, to the podium to give a brief overview of the 2024-2025 interim budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling, and good evening, board members. For the general fund, the budget includes ad valorem tax revenue of $95.7 million, which will be a decrease of $1.1 million due to the expected reduction in the millage rates for this year. Sales taxes, there'll be, our budget did to be $73 million, which will be an increase of about $4.6 million, and this increase is due to the fact that we are expecting some large industrial projects to begin during this fiscal year. State funding is showing a decrease of $1.7 million to $37.3 million, because we are expecting a decrease in the state MFP funding. Other revenues, to budget conservatively, we have at $7.5 million, a decrease of about $700,000. And so, we have total revenues of $213.5 million, which we're budgeting to be an increase of $1.1 million. For general fund expenditures, we're budgeting an increase of $2.4 million in salaries due to the implementation of the new salary structure, a decrease of about $2.0 million in retirement costs because the state mandated retirement percentage contributions is being reduced for this year. And to be on the safe side, we're budgeting an increase of about $2.0 million for increased healthcare benefits. Property insurance, as we know, this last renewal was a decrease, and most of that policy period falls within this coming fiscal year, so we're budgeting a decrease of about $800,000 for property insurance. And then, to be on the safe side, we have other expenditures increasing by a total of $2.1 million. So, overall, we have total expenditures and transfers to other funds of $213.2 million, which will be an increase of $4.4 million. For this year, we're showing the revenues exceeding the expenditures and transfers by about $300,000 for the general fund. For other funds, special revenue funds, we're showing $14.5 million in revenues and $14.6 million of expenditures. For the debt service funds, we have $13.6 million revenues and $11.7 million of expenditures. Capital projects funds, revenues of $11.5 million and $30.8 million of expenditures. The reason for the difference is the ongoing bond projects, and we just received those proceeds for the 2024 bond issue. Lunch fund, we have revenues of $7 million and expenditures of $9.4 million, and this difference is being funded by the current lunch fund balance. Thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. White, did you do any calculations? You mentioned that there's a reduction in state funding this year. Did you do any calculations of the relationship between the reduced state funding and the per pupil expenditure in the state of Louisiana as, in relation to '23, '24, and the projected '24, '25? Secondly, does the reduction in per pupil expenditure or in expenditure for education, does that have any bearing or relationship to either a loss of students or an increase in student projected population for '24, '25?
The reduction in the state funding this year to St. Charles Parish Public Schools is mostly due to the fact that our local revenue is so high, and the way the formula works, the state funding will be reduced a little bit. But overall, for the state, I don't see that the MFP formula has changed to alter the amount of per pupil funding statewide. It's just affecting us in this parish. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It answers my question, but it brings to bear that a reduction will affect St. Charles Parish in particular, and maybe not other states. And that's the point that I want to make, is that St. Charles Parish is being punished because of the amount of revenue that we can generate. So instead of an equalization, which we talk about, there is no tax equalization. And if we do not, as a local school district, if we do not uh, generate additional revenue beyond what other municipalities uh, generate, then that's going to have a tremendous impact on education in our, in our school district because the per pupil expenditure in St. Charles Parish is in fact going to be lower while other parishes who, who, who are not maybe as diligent as we are in terms of trying to uh, generate local dollars, uh, could be.
Correct. If I could add, the per pupil amount included in the state M F P formula has not been increased in many, many years.
Correct.
So while many costs have been increasing, obviously statewide, uh, including just inflation, the state has not increased uh, the amount of per pupil funding. And so that's, that's hurting us because while our local revenues increase, the state funding is not matching up with that.
Correct. And, and in a, in a state where we are already uh, in the bottom quartile as it relates to funding for public education, um, that to take another hit as a school district is uh, a, a complete negative for St. Charles Parish. And I, I, I want that point to be made because I think uh, our constituents need to understand that we offer a tremendous amount for our students here in St. Charles Parish in terms of our efforts to be a, a district that focuses on uh, on the three tiers, the arts, the academics and so forth. But yet, the state does not do as much to assist us in our efforts as we, we, we have to do on our own.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I'd like to just uh, add to Mr. Smith's statement just because I do think it's, it's relevant here in this discussion is um, you know, potentially a special session will be called in August, uh, that will be focused specifically on taxes. And of course, in St. Charles Parish, we rely very heavily on our ad valorem inventory tax. Some, you know, messaging out there is that they are going to look at inventory tax. If that does occur, as Mr. Smith stated, because we are so reliant on our local, um, you know, revenues, that could significantly impact us if that would shift. Uh, so we will be paying special attention to that. We'll be using our lobbyists from that standpoint uh, to make sure our voices are heard if that does occur, but that does, that's very relevant to, to your statement, Mr. Smith.
There any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Ronald White.
Thank you.
Any other um, discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The interim F Y twenty-five budget is unanimously approved. Next item is four point one six, the millage rates for the tax year two thousand twenty-four. The Louisiana law requires an agency with taxing authority to furnish the assessor and legislative auditor with the tax rate to be applied for, to the assessed property values each year. The school board is a taxing body and must take action to approve the levy of property tax rate. Favorable board action on the attached resolution is necessary for the millage to be levied and collected. This agenda item was reviewed at the finance and audit committee meeting on Monday, July fifteenth and is aligned with goal D of the board strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we reduce the school operations and maintenance millage from thirty-six point nine two mils to thirty-three point nine two mils and adopt the resolution to approve the millage rates for the tax year two thousand twenty-four.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mr. Sufferin. This uh, reduction of three mils would uh, result in estimated revenues of nine million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for school constitutional tax revenues. Eighty-four million, six hundred thirty thousand, four hundred dollars for school operation and maintenance tax. Ten million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for school construction and improvement revenue and twelve million, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars for school bonds. Is there any um, discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The millage rate for the tax year two thousand twenty-four is reduced, is unanimously reduced, three mils. Next item on the agenda is accounts payable for the month of June two thousand twenty-four. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school districts are paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under this jurisdiction. This uh, agenda item was reviewed at the finance and audit committee meeting on Monday, June, July fifteenth and is aligned with goal D of the board strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of June two thousand twenty-four.
A second?
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mrs. Boudreaux. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Accounts payable for the month of June two thousand twenty-four is unanimously approved. That brings us to our closing items. Item five point zero one, standing committee reports. Is there um, any chairman of a standing committee report that wishes to um, deliver a report? You can do so now.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance and audit committee consisting of me, Ms. Karen Boudreaux and Mr. Al Sufferin met on Monday. We discussed three items. The interim fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget, accounts payable for the month of June two thousand twenty-four and millage rates for the tax year two thousand twenty-four. Uh, it's important to note that the three mil reduction uh, approved just a few moments ago is in addition to the four and a half percent or approximately two mils uh, received by the legislative auditor uh, because of the reassessment in St. Charles Parish. Uh, the total reduction in mils is five mils from the two thousand twenty-three. So when comparing two thousand twenty-four mils to two thousand twenty-three, the reduction is a total of five mils. Just, I think it's important to note for the public uh, to know that we are not only being fiscal responsible uh, in our expenditures, but also understanding that when we can reduce, we, we do. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Any other reports? If not, if there are?
I have something to report from the technology committee. We did not meet on Monday, but I would like to celebrate our technology department for rolling out the new email address. We are S C P P S dot org. How great is it that I just know what the email is now? Isn't that awesome? So thank you to the technology department and everyone who works so hard on making that happen. That concludes my report. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mrs. Boudreaux.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee held a meeting on Monday, July fifteenth, and we covered six items. All six of those items were on this meeting's agenda and they were approved by the full board. Those six items were the disciplinary hearing officers, job description revisions, personnel items, revisions to board policy six point six point one, immunizations communicable diseases for a first reading, revisions to board policy six point six point two, administration of medication for a first reading and revisions to board policy six point six point three, behavioral health services for students for a first reading. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. Any other chairperson? If not, that brings us to our last and final agenda item, the superintendent's report.
And board, please bear with me. This is a rather long um, beginning of the year report. The two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year is quickly approaching and we're excited to welcome back our students and families from what I hope was a restful break. To ensure a smooth transition to the start of the new school year, we will once again conduct staggered starts for kindergarten through twelfth grade students. Kindergarten through twelfth grade students with the last name beginning with A through K will attend their first day of school on Thursday, August eighth and remain on, remain home on Friday, August ninth. Kindergarten through twelfth grade students with a last name beginning with L through Z will attend school on August ninth and remain home on August eighth. All kindergarten through twelfth grade students will attend school daily on Monday, August twelfth. Pre-kindergarten students will begin their staggered start on August fifteenth and sixteenth. The school administration will also send information relative to returning to school. Before school reopens, a back-to-school brochure will be mailed to all St. Charles Parish residents. Please check your mailbox for the brochure in the coming weeks. Students will once again receive an inbox which contains important district and school documents for the year. I'd like to thank Shell Norco Manufacturing Complex for its continued support of funding the inbox. Please review the information in the inbox and complete any back-to-school paperwork before the deadline. Also, visit the district's and school websites for important back-to-school information. Information is being updated regularly with important information for the start of the new school year. September will be designated as attendance awareness month, but it never hurts to start early. The twenty-four, twenty-five campaign, be present, be powerful, will help inspire students to attend school regularly. Child Welfare and Attendance will collaborate with the administration to implement a schoolwide attendance contest from September third through September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Attendance Awareness Month will include educational groups, providing resources for students and families. Daily attendance reminders and statistical facts outlining the positive impacts when students attend school. The annual youth rally backpack giveaway for St. Charles Parish students and parents will take place on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, from eight A M. to eleven A M. in the Jerusalem Shriners Center parking lot located at nineteen forty Ormond Boulevard in Destra Hand. The rally is sponsored by St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, St. Charles Parish Department of Community Services, a safe place for St. of St. Charles, blessed to be a blessing, United Way of St. Charles and St. Charles Parish Public Schools. This year's event will be a drive-through school supply giveaway to the first five hundred St. Charles Parish residents. This is an excellent kickoff to the school year and we hope to see you there. Bus registration is now open for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. If your child will use transportation services this school year, please log on to transportation bus registration page and register each child separately. You should have received an email either yesterday or today, actually. If your child is ten years old or younger, a few additional questions will be required to ensure safe delivery home in the afternoons. We are pleased to offer the use of the Where's the Bus app to assist families with real-time bus arrival to and from school. Once you register your child for the bus, please register for the bus app. If you're already a user of the app, there is no need to complete this step again. If you have questions about transportation service or bus registration, please call nine eight five seven eight five seven two zero six. We look forward to providing transportation service to our students and seeing them at the bus stop on August eighth and ninth. We are pleased to inform you that St. Charles Parish Public Schools will continue providing all students with one free healthy breakfast and one free healthy lunch each day for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Should you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact our child nutrition offices at nine eight five seven eight five three one seven nine. As we get ready for the upcoming school year, I want to emphasize that the health and safety of our students and employees are always our top priorities. Our Safe Schools program is robust and has been developed with the support of the collaboration of the St. Charles Parish Sheriff's Office, the St. Charles Parish Emergency Operations Center, St. Charles Parish Hospital and local first responders. It is continuously evaluated and improved. We have added additional resource officers, protective coating on glass and upgraded camera systems at our sites. In addition, we have existing safety measures such as single-point entries, safety vestibules, perimeter fencing, camera systems linked to local law enforcement and staff resource officers. Our employees also want to go yearly training to respond appropriately to emergencies. In addition to implementing these safety measures, we also prioritize our students' mental health and well-being. We work to assess their needs and provide early interventions and support. Recently, the board made significant investments in expanding programs and resources to support the social emotional wellness needs of our students. This includes establishing mental health professionals at all of our sites. We have school-based social emotional wellness teams with licensed mental health professionals and school counselors to provide comprehensive support to our students. Our enhanced behavioral health universal screening process helps identify students experiencing trauma, anxiety and other adverse circumstances, circumstances, allowing us to determine if they need additional support. We then align internal and external resources as needed to address their needs. Finally, the board recently approved full-time nurses for our schools to meet the medical needs of our students and our staff. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ortlund.
I move to adjourn.
If there's no opposition to Mrs. Boudreaux's motion to adjourn, meeting is adjourned.